Here, Denzel. Burksen.
Here.
Betts. Carter.
Here.
Howard.
Good morning.
Ezri.
Here.
Holderfield. Here. James.
Here.
Jay.
Here.
Kibler.
Here.
Hertz.
Here.
Langenhain.
We have a court. See for proof in the mess for a second or four times.
So do.
James, second by Carter. Mr. Moe.
One correction. Scott Bidner, not Doug Bidner.
And the other I page on line forty. Page one. It should be, it says Doug Bidner.
It should be Scott. And the case is unlike the man.
Any other changes? Okay, well, whenever it agrees with Mr. Moe, there's an objection, a change. Three months, you know, take that from time. All favor of food events.
Aye, aye.
Or oppose. Pass. I see for proof of the agenda, any agenda.
Go blue.
We got a try, second by Brad. Stassen. Is that my favor?
Aye.
Or oppose. Comes to this place. Mr. Johnson. You're not here. All right, next up is Tom Sager.
Evening, how's it going? Is this thing on?
Oh, oh, yeah. Yes.
I'm coming to you tonight as Chair of the Local Foods Policy Council. To talk about the Champaign County Lisa. And you may have seen in your packet, we did pass a resolution a few weeks ago encouraging the ZPA and the county board to come up with ways that can not only help preserve large parcels of agricultural land generally used for the traditional commodities crops, the row crops, corn and beans, but also to be able to preserve some of the smaller plots of land which are pretty much ideal for growing local foods. And we think this is important for a couple of reasons. One is that growing local foods is something that is growing by leaps and bounds. My understanding is in the last ten years, the local food production has increased four times throughout the United States. So it's the fastest growing area of food production in the United States. So in, and in being so popular right now, it's an opportunity to be seen as economic development. It's not just farming and, you know, putting up a farm stand. There are a lot of other ways that local foods are being produced and getting to the consumer. But the farm stands, there are a lot of the local grocery stores are buying local produce, locally grown produce because there's a big demand for it. There are community-supported agriculture farms. It's a variety of different ways that this local produce is getting into the home because people demand the higher quality. They like the fact that their food is grown locally and very close to them. They like the fact that very often when they have their, they get their food locally, they know the farmer, they know how it's grown, they know where the farm is, they can go out and visit, they can give the farmer input, a variety of things like that. So, but we noticed in the Lisa that it is very much geared towards the row crops, the corn and beans, which is probably the tradition then, and that's, you know, the majority of the farmland by far. And so there are some things in the Lisa that, you know, give more points for the larger parcels of land, like I said, the twenty-five acres or more gets the maximum number of points in that particular category. Under five acres gets zero points. But those parcels of land that are five to ten acres can be ideal for vegetable farming and for locally grown produce and livestock as well. So the other, another thing that the Lisa does is, you know, gives points for being further away from urban areas and having more agricultural uses around it. A lot of the benefits to a smaller farm is to be closer to an urban area because that's where your market is. Your market is going to be a lot different than it is for the commodities of the corn and beans and so forth. So we're not saying not to, you know, continue to protect the larger parcels of land, but try to find some way of protecting the smaller parcels of land as well. And it seems like the Lisa is, it's, it's difficult to do that in the same instrument. So that's why we kept our, our resolution relatively vague and not suggesting any specific changes to it, but just trying to see if there was a way to incorporate the concept of saving the smaller parcels of land, good agricultural land in addition to the large ones and the ones that are closer to the urban areas. Now, if that means, you know, doing it in the Lisa, that would be great, but, you know, the Lisa is just one of, what, twelve criteria that you look at? You know, maybe it's better to, you know, create a thirteen criteria or something like that that would be able to promote the preservation of those smaller parcels of agricultural land. And with that, I'll take any questions if you have any.
Glad to respond. Other purpose question, whether it's special or not.
Oh, okay. Thanks.
I leave the thing back there.
Okay.
Bruce Stickers.
Hello, I'm Bruce Stickers of one fifteen East Evergreen, St. Joseph, Illinois, and I was on the Lisa Committee, and we've got fifteen times in order to write this process about, and I'm coming to, of course, you're going to vote on tonight on what you want to do with it. So I just wanted to say, we spent a lot of time going through everything, and the goal of the Lisa is to protect agriculture, and it protects all types of agriculture, whether it be large or small. And the way that it is written, it protects local foods, people can grow local foods or faraway foods. One of the things that we found in trying to work through the system was definitions are very difficult, and if you try and do something to save for local foods, well, what if this year I have my little local foods thing, and I, I go down to the, uh, market on Saturdays and take my food there, okay, I'm local food. What if next year I decide, gee, I did pretty good, so this year I can spend eighty percent of my time going to Indianapolis and selling it there? Well, is Indianapolis local or not local? So definitions get very, very difficult. So trying to micromanage this thing into small things that can change, probably not what we want to do. So I do appreciate the opportunity you gave all of us to work on. We spent fifteen meetings and many hours going through many definitions. The goal of the Lisa system is to preserve land for agriculture and to try and guide development to those areas where it fits best. In Champaign County, we're blessed with some of the best farmland in the world, and really all of it could be protected, and there's very good reasons why it should because it is excellent farmland, but yet we know some development is going to take place. So the goal is to try and direct most of that development to areas where it is best. And I think the work that we did is, was well done, and I would appreciate it that we passed this along because it does need to go to the State Department of Agriculture for approval, to the National Resources Conservation Service, and the local soil and water conservation district reports implemented. Thank you.
Excuse me.
Good evening, my name is David Peace, eight oh seven South McKinley in Champaign. Here as a resident, although I'm also an attorney in town with the law firm of Weber and Peace in Urbana. I appreciate the opportunity to appear briefly before you tonight, spend some time. Since I was regularly at these meetings, I served as a Democrat on this board from nineteen eighty-eight to nineteen ninety-two. I am one of your appointees now with Mr. James on the Champaign County Board Health, so it's good to be back. I've seen a few people that I recognize who are bad. Knowing how much time you put into what you do, I also want to take the opportunity to say thank you for your service. But tonight I'm here to reintroduce you to someone who you've met more recently, Noah, my friend Dennis Kenny. You will remember Dennis as a local architect who was part of a team making a proposal considered by you over the last several months for provision of professional services in connection with your jail needs assessment study. Dennis's firm was not selected, and I'm not here to ask you to reconsider that decision if that were not possible. I do believe, however, the recommendations had been made by others about Dennis and his background that, in my opinion, need to be addressed and corrected. As I said, I'm here as Dennis's friend. I also, in the spirit of full disclosure, should say that I've represented him for thirty years, and I've watched him and his work. I've known him all that time. In our early adult life, we lived together with our families in the Clark Park area of Champaign, and I've been able to watch as he has been both an individual, member of our community, and also a professional. We don't always agree on everything. He's a conservative, I'm fairly moderate, but professional competence and integrity aren't evaluated based upon politics. Having read some of the things that have been said about Dennis as a part of the request for proposal process, I feel that the picture painted by at least some should be corrected. I hope that I would feel this way about anyone as treated in our public process, but I particularly feel this way with a local professional friend. Dennis will speak to the specific criticisms you have heard, and I hope he will listen in just a few moments. For my part, let me tell you that Dennis Kenny is one of the more principled people in integrity than I know. His professional reputation throughout the United States is stellar. He is honest, he awaits conflicts of interest with a passion, although he is compensated for his work as any professional should be. I can tell you the compensation is secondary as a motivation for the work that he does. He is truly interested in the success of our criminal justice system, particularly as it relates to jails and development of facilities alternatives, James. He is equally passionate about his community. It does not surprise me at all to see that he would take an interest in the criminal justice system in Champaign County and try to help where possible. I would not want local professionals to feel that they are not welcome to the discussion about local issues, nor would I want public bodies to hold local professionals to a standard different than the standard to which you hold those who are from far away. In short and in conclusion, I regret that some have, in my opinion, mistaken the reputation and credentials of my friend Dennis Kenny. I thank you for allowing him the courtesy and moment to speak to just a few of the criticisms as a way of rehabilitating his reputation. I'm not here to criticize your decision or to ask you to revisit it. I just think that as a fellow community member, we together can do better.
That's your last thing.
Dennis Kenny, seven forty South Mahone Road in Mahone. And, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I'd like to ask for just a couple minutes more than the customary five. An attack pretty harshly and personally in this forum.
A favor.
Aye.
Or oppose.
Aye.
Thank you very much. I come before you as a person who simply responded to a county RFP for a jail needs assessment study. In return, I had my integrity, credibility, even my morality publicly attacked. As reluctant as I am to appear before you tonight, I cannot let these attacks stand without a response. The attacks started at your June twelve meeting when Board Member Carol Adams charged my firm with a quote "serious conflict of interest" unquote because we were already being consulted on the jail. She used that accusation to cast doubt on the integrity of planning committee members for ranking a writ proposal first by a wide margin. Mrs. Adams used her accusation as a segue into advocating that ILPP in Berkeley, California, joined the top three interview group even though they ranked poorly, finishing seventh out of eight. I have to assume the conflict charge perhaps stems from a couple of emails I sent the sheriff in an attempt to simply help my own county. An email sent one year ago, for example, had offered some opinions about how to mitigate some of the problems of the downtown jail that caused two NIC consultants to recommend its immediate closure, a conclusion I found extreme. There are two crucial facts about these emails. First, my emails were unsolicited and not part of any ongoing relationship with the sheriff. Second, they went without response or acknowledgement. To me, they just disappeared into the ether. To go so far as to label this a disqualified serious conflict of interest is absurd and unfair. With the way things have transpired, I actually believe you should label this no good deed goes unpunished. Also at the June twelve meeting, Mrs. Petrie insultingly dismissed our proposal and all others as non-responsive, quote, "cranked-out boilerplate" unquote. This too was done for the purpose of getting ILPP an interview and diminishing our standing. While we don't show our potential clients, especially our own county, such disrespect, we spent hours writing originally and responsibly on all aspects of the requirements. This included specially-written case studies, an example being where our recommendations to Pinellas County, Florida resulted in a reduction of four hundred and forty pretrial felons in one year and ninety-five million dollars in avoided construction. Mrs. Adams also accused us and all other proposers except ILPP with quote "classic conflicts of interest" unquote because we were builders and architects, even though seven of the nine requested services required architectural skills. Her argument was essentially that none of us could be trusted to give honest answers about building these because we were all quote "angling" unquote for the next phase of work, design. By contrast, ILPP stood out because they quote "simply did analysis" unquote. I was quite surprised then when during ILPP's interview, Mr. Kalmanoff told me award-winning designs he worked on, and how a San Francisco architect built award-winning jails. The key to explain this contradiction is on page twenty-two of ILPP's proposal. There, they make the exceedingly fine distinction that it is only a conflict of interest to work on a design when you hold a prime contract, not if you are a subcontractor to the prime contract. Well, since we never hold the prime contract during design either, then I now assume that the classic conflict of interest charge against us is hereby withdrawn? Or is ILPP now as conflicted as us? Insulting as all of this was, I was going to let it all go. Then I learned that even after the process ended with ILPP's selection, the newspaper article was circulated among county board members that was meant to further attack our credibility. The contents of this article were then trumpeted on September twenty during public participation by Peace and Justice Member James Kilgore, a self-described research scholar at the university. In their eagerness to further attack my reputation, Board Member and the research scholar relied on the flimsiest of evidence, one article from a fringe newspaper which never contacted us for our side of the story. The article alleges that one of our clients overbuilt because during our two thousand and five study, we made jail population predictions that were quote "all wrong." Mr. Kilgore suggested immoral conduct, as I quote "laughed all the way to the bank" unquote, for designing and unduly profiting from the allegedly overbuilt jail I wantonly recommended. Let me tell you, six things that were wrong were left out in this hard-to-convenience story. First, the article was factually wrong about the population we projected for two thousand and ten. It was not for over one thousand, but for nine twenty-six, much closer to the actual average. Second, the article says that when the county finally decided to build in two thousand and eight, our projections were already way off. They reported an average daily population of eight fifty-seven to make the point, but didn't report our projection of eight seventy-two, which is hardly way off. Third, we made significant recommendations regarding alternatives to incarceration, including the very expansion of pretrial release services that the article credited with holding the population down. Though the article gave us no credit for this achievement, we consider the lower jail population a success, not a failure. Fourth, the article criticized us for saying that alternatives alone would not be enough, and that the only real option was building a new jail. But they missed a key reason behind our statement, which was that peak counts were nearing one thousand inmates in dangerous jails that only had four hundred compliant beds per current standards. Fifth, it was ridiculous to declare a two-week-old jail planned for the year two thousand and five in a fast-growing community overbuilt. This is particularly true since existing jails were overcrowded by thirty percent against existing capacity and one hundred and ten percent against standards-compliant capacity, and system practitioners were holding back the population in response. Last, we did not design the jail. In fact, we've had absolutely nothing to do with that project for the last seven years. So sorry, Mr. Kilgore, wherever you are, there was no side-splitting trips to the bank. Mr. Kilgore's personal attack on me after our team had already been rejected was a nasty, gratuitous twisting of the knife. It was highly inappropriate conduct from an official representative of the county's jail task force, and as to someone with such a shocking personal history, he should be the last person to pass moral judgment on me. In closing, I accept your right to pick whomever you want to do your study, and as a citizen, I hope for its success. What I cannot accept, and I will not tolerate, are attempts at trashing my integrity and credibility as a means of attaining a desired political result. That this occurred in my own community, of all places, in front of my family and friends is worse. As I taught my children, the ends do not justify the means. I think some people on this board and in this community need to relearn this basic lesson of moral conduct. Thank you.
Mr. Eric Simmons.
Good evening. We're live here. My name is Eric Siemens. I live at three thousand Main Street Drive in Champaign, and I'm here to address a request for language amendment to the B-one rural trade center district use. I have five points I'd like to make that I think are supporting to consider serious consideration for this one. I need to find that in active information. One, currently both uses contractor facility and self-storage have been and are allowed in the ag-two zoning district. And type of area of my property is in. They are just not included in a specific type of zoning. Number two, allowing a contractor facility in the B-one district is in line with normal customary uses of that type of zoning in area use. Three, self-storage and contracting are both business services that are utilized by the rural community as well. Number four, many, in many cases, these two business types are offered by one in the same district. And number five, the B-one zoning general intent is to provide areas, including ag, with related business services, which would keep contracts. Thank you very much for your time.
Charlie Jesse.
Hello, my name is Charlie Jesse. I'm the owner of Jesse Heating Air Conditioning that I started in nineteen seventy-nine. I'm here to ask the board to support the zoning amendment that allow contractors to facilitate on a B-one zoning. Seventeen years ago in nineteen ninety-five, I purchased a building at ten acres at thirty-seven oh two West Old Church Road, which no one knows where it is. If you go south from Curtis Orchard, to Old Church, and go west just over the interstate, and that, my property is right there. It's a pie-shaped piece of property. The building was built for a landscape contractor in approximately nineteen seventy-four, thirty-eight years ago. Before I purchased the property, I came to the county offices and got a special use permit to operate my business there. Since that time, I've put about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars into the property. Recently, I've come to the county asking for directions so that I'd be allowed to build a self-storage at the property. I was told that because I fall within the mile and a half of the extra jurisdiction requirement of the city of Champaign, that I would have to get the city's blessing before it would make sense to get the permits. I went to the city, and I'm not going to bore you with all those details, but basically the, the people in the zoning office say they will not support it. The mayor, I took him to the site, and he said he didn't see any reason why it wouldn't be fine, that the people in the zoning office will not support it. They say that, that the reason is because of their two thousand and eleven comprehensive plan, the map that they drew up. It shows my property as a residential subdivision. And I showed them pictures of the property, and I explained that the interstate, I'm ordered by the interstate on one side, a big ditch on the other side, and I only have an entrance just in the southwest corner of the property, and the entrance is just right in front of my build. So I, I asked him, I said, well, okay, so would, if someone built homes back behind me, would they have to drive through my parking lot to get to home? Or, another thing I asked was that the building had been there for thirty-eight years, used as a, basically a commercial use, and why wasn't that taken into consideration when I asked this? In conclusion, I, I'm just asking that you support that amendment. I, you know, I could come and ask for the permits and go under the B-four zoning and just hope that when the city protests that, that you would vote against the city. But it seems to me like it would make a lot more sense if you made the amendment, that I could come in and get, apply for B-one zone, which would narrow my allowed uses of the property by a bunch. And then I will probably still have to ask if you vote against the city if they protest me. Thank you.
My name is Norman Stenzel. I live at five four five eight County Road, nineteen hundred and eleven Champaign. I have spent considerable time in meetings about, about various things, including Lisa. And I'd like to speak to you for a few moments in respect to Lisa. I'd like to recommend to the county that the Lisa is not ready for application and should be reconsidered by, placed by ZPA for a variety of reasons. First of all, we heard from Mr. Stickers that the goal of Lisa is one item. Actually, the federal government suggested four items. First goal is to preserve prime farm ground as a national security issue. The second goal was to support the viability of agriculture, the issue that Mr. Stickers identified. And that was at an individual level. The third is to support agriculture as a community, not just the individual site, but related sites. What would be the impact of conversion of one site upon neighboring sites? And the fourth then would be to support the viability of supported businesses for agriculture. Present Lisa has two items that relate to those four goals, and it is not broad enough in that way. Next, I'd like to support the idea of local foods. The last I saw as a total value of row crop production. But economists do tell us that local foods produce greater value per acre than row crop farming. So I wouldn't ignore the local foods people. I would include it in the LISA, in fact. And I have suggested ways in which it could be included in the LISA. It's part of what the zoning administrator says. You can have a branched section of the LISA. You already have one, a one suggested branch, or COOGA. And there's no reason why you could not have a second branch for local foods. And the zoning administrator suggests that you can't add items because you don't have enough points. Well, some of the consideration for local foods could include not counting other items that are incompatible with local foods when you go through the local food branch. Is this possible? Is this feasible? I had suggested that. ZDA didn't seem to understand what I was talking about. Perhaps you don't even unfortunately, I guess. The next thing I'd like to point out is that the test sites that are heralded as a way of showing the value of the LISA are, were not field tests. The test sites do not have the same characteristics as people coming to the ZDA asking for a variance or asking for a conversion of a piece of property. In fact, one of the differences that exists when somebody comes to the ZDA saying, I'd like to convert this property, is that they may have been helped by the zoning administrator to configure their request so that the value, the value areas of land are low enough to convert a piece. It's sort of like gerrymandering, a political term. The last thing I'd like to point out is that instruments of this sort need to be valid and reliable. Validity is that an instrument does what it purports to do, and reliability is that it does it consistently. Well, none of the efforts so far have demonstrated either one of those characteristics. And I think what needs to be done is to have a true field test that would help determine whether it actually does what it purports to do and is able to do it in a consistent and reliable manner.
Any other public participation? Close out. Go on to communications from the board. Let's go on to our areas of contact. Mr. Jay?
Mr. Wyler, would you go ahead and do that for my third? There's nothing, any consequence on that tonight. If you would, I'd like to do that.
Next up is two oh two Arctel Canal Construction Products. General opinion?
Board opinion is much accepted. Also moved.
Second opinion is good, but discussion. All fair.
Aye.
Okay, once again, the report on your, on page one is the standard spreadsheet showing the two oh two South Arctel Route construction project. The normally payments that have been made, shown paid this month, were one thousand four hundred and twenty-four dollars. This was a small partial payment to Purge Clansing Associates.
Question? What do they have left to do?
Okay.
Please explain change order three, please.
Absolutely.
We're going, listen, watch it, and we're in.
Okay. On the document I submitted to you is a general overview of our project. They stated that we had to issue three change orders across construction during portion of this project as additions to their contract. Basically, change order one was to eliminate the broken worn-down sidewalk that was in front of the old, the old Mercy Home Administration Building. Instead of putting in a thirty-foot-long piece of brand new slab in the middle of ADP, a bare, broken concrete that was non-useable, we just removed all the concrete seed.
This sidewalk went north-south from the road to the building, or the pedal eliminated?
North-south from the bus stop to the administration. Change order two came about wherever we were, the staff sent final grade, all the pipe was installed, and we discovered the culvert that was underneath the intersection between, at the stop sign, just south of Bank Street, which is completely plucked. When we cleaned the culvert, we found the bottom of it was almost completely rotten. So stabilized, instead of digging it back up, we grounded it and smelt the dirt and adjusted flow lines, so that we resolved that issue. Change order number three.
I think you actually filled up the culvert with cement, correct?
That is correct.
Where does the water flow?
With the addition of the new storm inlets, we were able to just, yeah, slightly adjust the flow rates to the existing. Change order three was issued. They're approved by Purge Clansing Associates.
You have questions?
I asked a question on change order number one.
Okay.
We removed this sidewalk. How do people get from the administration building to the bus stop?
This is from the old abandoned Mercy Homes, is now ideas. They do not use the administration section of the building for anything except for SWAT training, field training. Even when the Mercy Home was active, the bus shelters still worked. Very few people actually used that sidewalk because it was in such bad shape. It is not being, the bus stop is still there, I assume, but no one travels that sidewalk at all.
This is the sidewalk that went to the old farm, I saw. There's a farm inside.
The original two-story farm.
Which is no longer used. Okay, any other questions? One, two? Go ahead.
I don't understand why this sidewalk was removed under our, I don't understand what that has to do with it.
We had to remove a thirty-foot by ten-foot section to install the CM pipe.
It's all part of the start of water.
Okay, change order three. This was a unit price bid for this project, where each contractor supplied, the engineers supplied a list of unit prices for them to bid. Everyone bid unit price, and between the actual drawings and the site conditions, there was small discrepancies within the actual pipe used to fit onto the actual site. There was an additional four foot of an eighteen-inch pipe where one section did not line up exactly with what they, where they thought the existing underground eighteen-inch pipe was. So they had to make a site modification on that one attempt. The remaining issues were, a large one was when they excavated across the asphalt parking lot on the salt dome site, the asphalt was so deteriorating and crumbling, they could not stabilize the side of the trench line, and so therefore more asphalt, more dirt came into the trench, and so there were more quantities of asphalt to be put back on top of it to stabilize that trench line. Same thing happened to a small section of the asphalt in the entry to the animal shelter, where it was designed to remove an eight-foot cut, and they ended up going sixteen-foot because trying to get a good clean cut on the asphalt to patch it back, that's how far back they had to go. So, once, once the construction was finished, the contractors submitted the quantities. The engineers visited the site, verified the quantities were actually used, and the unit price that was supplied during the bidding was then used to calculate the final change order. So, what is always perfect on paper is not always perfect when you actually go on-site and start finishing projects.
Question?
I had communication with Mr. Reinhardt, previously expressing my concerns about all the salt, and now you're telling us that the salt laying around caused some of this deterioration, which then caused this extra work to be done. Do I understand correctly?
I'm not saying that it was the actual salt. Maybe it was the actual salt, semi, salt trucks and semi traders of salt that travel across that asphalt. They have many, many loads, semi-loads of salt probably every year, that drive right across this area, and they have their big M motors, and they have all their big salt trucks that travel in the same area, and so all that weight. Maybe the soil was not stabilized well enough to start with, regardless of what actually caused it. Maybe a little bit of salt, more likely that traffic caused it.
Thank you.
Will this appear in the next fraction? Can you change order?
I'll talk with, this everyone goes who does, who feels out the expression and make sure they're showing it there.
Okay, another question? Want to press a follow-up?
So moved.
James, I have a question.
Aye.
Next up is Paul Weber, downtown Driftwood.
On the third page of your handout is a really short basic spreadsheet showing the project as they were designed, and we put them together, and listed contractors that had notified or haven't notified us, and as of this time, Nogo and Black for the roof repair and maintenance. Nogo Black is on-site actually performing the roof repair. We're processing a purchase order right now for the RV Cox Masonry for the masonry repair. After the last meeting, I had another talk with the sheriff and his officers, and they decided that they prioritized the shower stalls next priority for inside the building. So I expect to have all proposals for those next two items in by the end of this week. That's why I did not put any numbers or values on them. So that's where we're at. So by the end of this week, hopefully, we'll have purchase orders to, up to or close to the peak that we've devised appropriate last month.
Question?
Again, I'm asking, would you vote that the paint that would be used inside the jail would be loaded with some paint?
Absolutely.
All right, back to you on. Clear the floor, Nogo and Black, clear the floor. Nothing for concern because we don't actually hire, so if you want to private land use, go ahead.
Good evening. Start with A, under Plock. Recreation Entertainment License, Egyptian Hunters Association, Bi-Social, Hunting Show, Champaign County Fangrounds, October twenty twenty-one, twenty-twelve.
Move approved.
Move approval by Mr. Lozier, Mr. Hohlefield, the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. B, request preliminary recommendation for approval of a text amendment, the Champaign County zoning ordinance, in zoning case seven-ten AT dash twelve, to amend the Champaign County LISA, petitioners, Champaign County zoning approved.
Move approved.
Ms. Coward, Mr. Maxwell.
Call the question.
Have anyone gotten to discussion yet? Pious.
B and C are both text amendments. They've been recommended from the ZDA. Texted amendments, standard protocol is for them to stay at the committee for one month, but during that month, it's essential that municipalities know if the committee is inclined to accept the recommendation of the ZDA or if it's inclined to change it. Because whether or not they're going to protest depends on what the county board is actually going to see for approval. So what we need tonight is some affirmation of accepting the recommendation or not. And then if you accept that recommendation, we need to wait a month, have this back at the committee in November for a final recommendation to the county board. And as Mr. Stickers said earlier, on seven-ten, another thing that the month provides for is for USDA NRCS review and element department that would touch you.
Brendan? So based, based on the fact that, and we talked about this a little bit in the office, based on the fact that we need to wait thirty days for an indication, but that it's logical for us to, if we can, give some sort of indication as to our preference at this time, I would like to move for deferral, but ask for a straw vote on what we're thinking at this time. Deferral to next month's cow, because we have to deal with this thirty days from now anyway.
I think that the most important word is that if you have the deferral, you can't ask for what, I think more appropriately, you have discussion, a straw vote, and then a separate motion to defer.
Fine, that's good to me. What I'm looking for is, is a straw vote that indicates what we're looking for so that we can indicate to the ZDA what we're thinking, then defer for until next month's cow.
So I'll have to get to discussion at this point. Ms. Petrie?
I would like to amend the document, refer to page forty in our packet. It actually begins on the bottom of page seven, the ZDA recommended a time framework for evaluation of the new LISA. And you will find it there on page forty, number seventeen. My amendment is that any new LISA be evaluated within two years or ten cases that come before the ZDA, whichever refers first.
Is there a second to that motion? Ms. Fox, second. Discussion on that motion.
Mr. Hall, could you explain to me, Ash, that any of this is actually a part of the project? Well, that's actually not a part of the LISA. The recommendation was just part of the ZDA's findings. I actually think that's a very good suggestion because one problem we have is, I doubt that we'll have, we could very well not have ten.
Good evening. Start with, uh, A, under Plock. Recreation Entertainment License. Egyptian Raptors Association Bi-Sultry Hunting Show Champagne County Fangrounds, October 2021, 2012.
Move approved.
Move approval by Mr. Mosher, Mr. Hohlefield, and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. D, request preliminary recommendation for approval of a text amendment to Champagne County zoning ordinance in zoning case seven ten AT dash twelve to amend the Champagne County LISA petitioners Champagne County zoning court approve.
Move approved.
Seven, uh, Ms. Coward, Mr. Maxwell.
Call the question.
Well, we haven't even gotten to discussion yet. Pius.
Thank you. B and C are both text amendments that have been recommended from the ZBA. Texted amendments, standard protocol is for them to stay at the committee for one month. But during that month, it's essential that municipalities know if the committee is inclined to accept the recommendation of the ZBA or if it's inclined to change it. Because, uh, whether or not they're going to protest depends on what the county board is actually going to see for approval. So what we need tonight is some affirmation of accepting the recommendation or, uh, not. And then if you accept that recommendation, uh, we need to wait a month, have this back at the committee in November for a final recommendation to the county board. And as Mr. Stupor said earlier, on seven ten, another thing that the month provides for is for USDA NRCS review and LM department agriculture review.
Brendan. So based, based on the fact that, and we talked about this a little bit in the office, based on the fact that we need to wait thirty days for an indication, but, but that it's logical for us to, if we can, give some sort of indication as to our preference at this time, I would like to move for deferral, but ask for a straw vote on what we're thinking at this time, deferral to next month's cow. Because we have to deal with this thirty days.
Well, what is, are the word, I think that the most part of the word is, you have the deferral, you defer, you can't ask the vote. I think more appropriately we have discussion, a straw vote, and then a separate motion to defer the vote.
Fine, that's good to me. What I'm looking for is, is a straw vote that indicates what we're looking for so that we can indicate to the ZBA what we're thinking, then defer for, until next month's cow.
So I'll have to get to discussion at this point, uh, Ms. Petrie.
I would like to amend, uh, the document, a reference, page forty, our packet. It actually begins, uh, on the bottom of page seven, the ZBA recommended a time framework for evaluation of the new LISA. And you will find it there on page forty, number seventeen. Anything else on the computers? Um, my amendment is that any new LISA be evaluated, uh, within two years or ten cases that come before the ZBA, whichever refers first.
Is there a second to that motion? Let's focus, second. Discussion on that motion.
Mr. Hall, could you explain to me, Ash, that any of this is actually a part of the project?
Well, uh, that's actually not a part of the LISA. The recommendation was just part of the ZBA's findings. I actually think that's a very good suggestion because one problem we have is, uh, I doubt that we'll have, we could very well not have ten instances of LISA analysis in the next two years. And, uh, it's up to the committee, I mean, we could still bring it back in two years or you could wait for ten cases. Uh, if we happen to see a rush of resignings, which, uh, I don't think would be good, but who knows, then it would come back sooner. I don't think that's hurtful. Again, it's not changing anything in the draft LISA, it's simply changing, um, the timeframe for evaluation.
I explained the information, uh, applying to the LISA, I'm willing to motion out of
order. I would say that because, well, we'll try to give correction to the LISA, without, without effect, the actual motion on the floor, therefore, you know, I'll say, I'll, I'll have to check and do on that.
So I have to, yeah, that amendment is out of order. Chris, did you have?
Uh, it, it's related to what you just ruled out of order. And I guess I need a little more understanding as to what we're being asked to approve. Is it just the changes to the LISA or is it the, is it the entirety of the ZBA recommendation? Because the ZBA recommendation does contain the language that Mr. Petrie was proposing to amend about when things, that.
I think that was a question. Chris, explain that one.
Uh, I don't.
One, one more time, please.
The agenda item is preliminary recommendation for approval of a text amendment, but the supporting interpretation is a memorandum from the ZBA. So what is the, I guess, what is the force of the language in the ZBA memo? Because that's what Mr. Petrie was trying to make.
My view is that that's merely a finding, it's an item of evidence that the ZBA made. They wanted to be, I, I had recommended that as so that the county board would have a clear recommendation. And so, uh, if I could suggest, I think one thing the committee could do is, uh, entertain this different timeframe for evaluation as just another part of the, the motion. It's not actually mending it, but it's adding to it.
I mean, we can amend that as often before. However, you certainly can direct John to do a mystery, I guess, I think that's important. So we don't have to amend the actual LISA language.
Ashton.
It seems to me if, if number seventeen is part of what we're to approve, then amending it is relevant. I don't understand why it's out of order.
Yeah, I, I guess I would agree with that. I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't seem that the proposed amendment is an amendment to the LISA language, it's an amendment to the motion. And the motion is essentially to indicate that we approve of the recommendation of the ZBA with the modification that Mr. Petrie recommended. I mean, I think, I think we're not trying to amend the LISA, we're just trying to amend the motion. And I think that's appropriate given that what we're, the whole point of this exercise is to indicate what our, what our preference is and how to proceed on this with regard to potential protest. So I think if we intend to deviate, if we intend that our practice is to deviate from the recommendation of the ZBA, I think it's appropriate that be given as an amendment in the form of amendment to the motion. So I guess that area it is more.
Yeah, I, I would suggest that since it is a changing of, of my, a text amendment change, um, we go ahead and, yeah, when you describe, take the straw poll and think about if we want to make that amendment or address Patsy's concern.
That's my suggestion. Mr. Moser.
You've got one month to deal with this or you're going to deal with a new board. And I'd hope that the nine or ten people that were on that committee that worked on this thing endlessly all winter could get what they did approve or you're going to start over and do it again. This, this to me is so much better than anything we've had for the last thirty years. And I can't agree with Norm Stencil on one thing he said up there tonight. Because what this did, as far as soils in this county categorized them the way they're assessed in the assessor's office, from the top to the bottom. And it's something that should have been cleaned up a long time ago because we've had three bulletins from the state reclassifying soil productivity in the last thirty years. And the last one was three years ago, which changed a lot of things as far as what an appraiser looks at. I've, I've been around here for forty, fifty years in agriculture. And I've spent forty years as a farm manager and an appraiser. And this is our bible. And when you go out and look at yields this year on what were the top four soils and what's down at the bottom, it's a sick picture as far as what productivity really is in, in this part of Illinois. I, I just can't understand how you can stand up there and make remarks that something that the soil types of Penfield, Illinois would be anywhere near equal what they are around this town or the south end of this county. And this document has done that. And if we don't get it off the dime tonight and give soil and water a chance to look at it and the state a chance to look at it, and the municipality is a chance to look at it, you're going to be in December with a new board and you're going to start over this whole process again or open it up to changes. And I can't tell you how hard Susan Monty and John Hall and Bruce Dickers and Mr. Donahoe and Deb Grace worked on this thing and hammered it out. And there was a lot of, I don't agree with Patsy on three fourths of the stuff she tried to stick in there. But some of it's in there and I, I've got no problem sending this onto the state and onto the Soil and Water District and getting a final answer on it in November. We, we started this a year ago. And they thought, this board has deferred and deferred and kicked hands down the road so long, it drives me crazy to sit here anymore. It's no way to run a ship.
Uh, I can't say much more, Steve's already said, but, uh, we just need to move this on down the road. The amendment that, that evidently was or wasn't out of order, I don't, is out of order, was, was really irrelevant in that we're probably not going to have the ten cases anyway. So I would like to see us move this forward.
Would you like to move first straw poll? What's that? I'm calling for a straw poll. Now we move this forward. What's that? I'm sorry, yeah.
I think I have the floor, if you'd like to.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Uh, I will point out that the, uh, this feature is a amendment, it's not, really not, but you cannot find a future board with any action. So what we can do is direct Mr. Hall to say in two years or ten cases, well, we must reevaluate. We can do that, we can not tell if we want to do it, that's just not believable.
Thank you, Pius. I'd like to call for a straw poll. All in favor? Please raise your hands to move this forward. Uh, we certainly have unanimous, I know, not unanimous, but close to. All right, we move it forward. Thank you. Let's move to the second agenda item. Uh, C, request preliminary recommendation for approval of a text amendment to Champagne County zoning ordinance and zoning case seven eleven AT dash twelve to amend the Champagne County zoning once by changing the definition of best prime cromley. And, uh, move to approve that.
So moved.
Mosher, Heedler. Discussion. Brendan.
For the same reasons as the previous item, I think we should proceed accordingly, getting a straw poll, pushing it forward so that we can act on it next month, that because of the same reasons. So, cutting to the chase, I think that we should get the straw poll and then defer.
I just wanted to point, we didn't actually designate moving, um, the first, I am D.
Right.
To, we didn't do the actual deferring.
We need a motion to defer on, on D. There's a motion, I have already a motion on four on C.
On C, but.
On C, we'll move back, we'll move back to D after we complete this motion. I have, I'm calling for a straw poll right now on C. All in favor? Please raise your hand. Thank you, did it pass. All right, let's go back to, sorry. Oh, we need a motion on C as well, to defer. Uh, can I have a motion to defer?
Just, just a point of order from the chair. Uh, is it appropriate to, um, request that I am D and C be moved, designated to next month's board meeting at the same time? Is that appropriate?
Yeah, that, I think.
So I, I would move that we move I am D and C, defer it to next month, committee of the hall.
Second, Mr. Wiesenberry. Discussion on the deferral. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. D and C. Thank you very much, Carol. Appreciate it. All right, D. Let's continue on, this is an interesting agenda tonight. Direction to the zoning, now this is direction, to the zoning administrator regarding proposal on the ordinance text amendment to amend limit on vehicles and equipment in rural home occupation, which was deferred from March sixth, twenty twelve. Motion, Mr. James. Second, Mr. Schroder. Discussion.
Confirmation from the last.
Confirmation.
Fair, how the motion to defer.
Okay, John, would you please, direction?
Um, well, deferred from March was this text amendment proposing several changes to the rural home occupations portion of the zoning ordinance. Since March, I've met with interested board members who changed this in a number of ways. I think it arguably is much better than it was when we had come to the committee before. And, uh, what we need to have tonight is a direction, if you're ready for this to go to a public hearing at the zoning court of appeals, or if you think that it needs more refinement.
Mr. James.
John, I was just going to say, based on all the comments I heard before and looking at that, you did a great job in taking our base comments into consideration and finding where it needs to be. And I think it's a better document than it was at first. Thank you.
Mr. James, Mr. Schroder.
Same lines of Mr. James, that I was one of those that came and spoke with you through all this, about a couple of things, I mean, limits, signed in view to me, and I appreciate you making those changes and I know there's some other comments, changes to, that, you look down and, 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 appreciate it, not everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Schroder, we're going to have discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Uh, D, direction to zoning administrator, doing a lot of directing to you, John, tonight. Okay, I just want you to do notes, a lot of notes there.
E.
E. E, correct. E, thank you, did I say D? Okay, I don't want to, okay, I'm trying to make it short, possible, E. Direction to zoning administrator regarding proposal on the ordinance text amendment to add agricultural drainage contractor facility to the Champagne County zoning ordinance. So move by Heedler and, that's right, second, thank you. Discussion first, John, would you please, so that questions will come to you, explain them.
Uh, we had a request recently from a local, uh, business that specializes in agricultural drainage. Uh, they're currently located inside a village, they'd like to relocate to the, uh, to the unincorporated area. And in discussing with that business owner, uh, one thing that agricultural drainage contractors quite often do is, if they have a backlog of projects and a farmer needs a drainage project immediately, farmers lots of times just buy the drainage products and install them themselves. Typically, a contractor's facility can only do very limited retail sales because we don't review them as retail facilities, we review them as contractor's facilities. And that's why in this amendment, it explicitly allows for a larger volume of just simply retail sales of agricultural drainage products. Now, that's the only thing that's intended to be covered by now. And so, uh, this is a fairly simple amendment. If it's authorized tonight, uh, I would hope to have it back to you in February after the ZBA took action. If not, maybe March, but this is really a very minor change and it's for use that relates specifically to agriculture.
Right.
John, I sort of, well, the problem are black tile.
Tile, culverts, inlets, uh, things like that, yeah.
Any other discussion on this item? Ms. Petrie.
Uh, yes, I'd like to have more discussion with John on a question that I sent to him related, I'm on page one seventeen. It's basically the last sentence of the second paragraph. And it reads, "To have as much as fifty percent of the dollar value of business in retail sales." And my question to John, um, is the following. How is one going to get the information concerning the amount of retail sales? And then a subset of that is, is there maybe an easier way to, um, construct this? One of the things that I mentioned to him in our email exchange was, would it be much easier for him as the zoning administrator if it was defined space which you could actually see and, and measure as compared to, uh, the, um, steps it would have to go through to find out retail sales amounts and values?
Uh, I don't know if you saw my, I did get a reply to you late this afternoon.
Uh, okay.
First of all, um, on the fifty percent, I don't know what proportion of retail sales these kinds of contractors typically have. Fifty percent is the maximum we could allow before we would have to question whether or not it's actually primarily contractor's facility. Personally, I'd like to have that level as high as possible so it doesn't become an issue. Secondly, uh, we already have limits like this for rural specialty businesses. Now, with a rural specialty business, we are concerned not just about the amount of retail sales, but the actual items being sold. So these are specific items, we know where they're being stored, they're separate then from the items that are produced on site. With an agricultural drainage contractor, presumably they have one drainage tile, they say, they have one drainage generator. They don't have different models, they don't make anything on site. So whereas we make those kinds of distinctions in a rural specialty business, how much area you're using for storing these things, I don't think that would be useful for this kind of a use. I think we just need to be concerned about the dollar volume, the percent of the total business. And furthermore, um, I hope I never have to ask a contractor, by the way, how much retail sales did you do last year? I would only ever ask that question if there's a complaint. These things are going to be approved by the ZBA with special use, this will be included as a condition, we don't monitor these things, I hope it never comes up. But if it does, then we can ask for whatever records we need to.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on this item? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Go to F. Directions to zoning administrator regarding proposed on the ordinance text amendment to amend contractor facility in the Champagne County zoning ordinance. So move by Heedler, second by Mr. Paul. Discussion on this item. Mr. Schroder.
Just a few comments about what we heard tonight, public participation, particularly Mr. Jassy, back, I was on ZBA, I don't think your members may be my family members, brought that from ZBA, degrees own and, yes, discussion is out of your facility. By the way, also contractor, so we are paid for too. I know Champagne and other municipalities in this county like to have things in a mile and a half that basically are similar. a mile and a half that basically are similar to what their ordinance look are, obviously that it makes good flow, unless there's pre-antation and annunciation. But, um, I, I, when it comes to Champagne, I think it's rather interesting what Mr. Jesse found out, from the city of Champagne, and this county's already experienced what they've got in the film on their water, on their latest law of trade. The city of Champagne, which can infill, save their lives, then, it's out of the rest of Champagne, uh, really doesn't care about its neighbors in the unincorporated Champagne County, period, you know? In fact, I warned some of my colleagues in Bay County to look out, because Scott Township is stone's throw away from Bay County, and I don't think Champagne is stopping. So, it's unfortunate we have to do this, but I think it's condescending, not only for Mr. Jesse and other contractors, but I think it's important that we do something about this. And, and I think, I'm all for proceeding with this, Mr. Hall and your staff, grab something that makes sense, and then, we'll proceed with this.
Thank you, Mr. Schroder.
Thanks.
Mr. Hall? Explain how the city, just, 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 just fix the work within a mile, and I'm not trying to disagree with Mr. Fisher, I'm just gonna, just, you know, how does that operate?
Well, with Mr. Jesse, I'll use Mr. Jesse's instance as an example, he came to us, uh, we see that there's gonna be some kind of an approval, that the city will have an opportunity to weigh in on, because he's within a mile and a half of the municipality, they have protest rights and rezonings, Mr. Jesse's land is zone Act 1, uh, we would never propose these kinds of uses in Act 1, so he's gonna have to rezone. That means the city will have a chance to weigh in. They don't have the final say, county board has the final say. But, uh, municipal protest triggers the supermajority requirement, with current board that's 21 of 27, I have to do the math for new board, I don't deal with, uh, but that's a high standard. And so, that's why we always advise someone like Mr. Jesse, they'll talk to the municipality first, rather than get a rude surprise. Well, he talked to them and he got a rude surprise, but that's how it works. If you're within a mile and a half, and you need a rezoning, even though it might make sense in the county zoning ordinance overall, they still have to write a protest. In fact, they'll have to write a protest on the text amendment, uh, because again, it affects everything within their mile and a half.
John?
Now, just to add a little bit to what John says, not only, uh, do we have a responsibility, these folks live in the county, work in the county, I'm sorry, this facility's in the county, that's our responsibility, we need to be taking care of those folks that are in the county, that's what we are, Champagne County Board.
Any other discussions on, Carol?
I don't understand procedurally, uh, how this would play out, even if the county board says, "Oh yeah, we'd love to help Mr. Jesse out," and the city says, "Well, no, because our ordinance doesn't allow it."
Actually, no, it's not a matter of their ordinance, uh, they would, they would take a vote on, just like we explained here earlier tonight, there's a text amendment, this committee affirmed the recommendations of the ZBA, now you wait a month to see if there's a protest, we'll do the same thing on this text amendment, and then, if, uh, Mr. Jesse wants to rezone, then there'll be a rezoning where the city will have a chance to protest. So, it's only ever protest, uh, if, that helps.
Until we were literally, uh, be changing this zoning from Act 1 to B1, is that what...
Well, that would be ultimately, first there would be the text amendment. Now, first, it'll be the text amendment to allow the contractor's facilities in B1. Uh, but again, the city can still protest that text amendment, but if that text amendment passes, then both Mr. Jesse and Mr. Stevens will have to rezone their property. And, uh, Mr. Stevens is not within a mile and a half of the municipality, but Mr. Jesse is. So, that's where the text, the protest would come in.
I think this is where, um, I guess as this goes forward, uh, this may be longer than my turn on this board, but the board members have to consider, of course, the current zoning of Act 1 is based on a criteria. And so, to change it from Act 1, as we talked about previously, because we wanna do a business venture there, however it sounds, we're changing it to Act 1, to another zoning, which opens up a door for things. So, I think as you look at your land resource management plan and resa, you gotta consider all of those factors when you just start changing them from Act 1 to this to accommodate.
And the reason why B1 is seen as reasonable is because the whole point of the B1 district is to be out there in the Act 1 district, wherever there's a need, wherever the county board says a need, that's what B1 is intended to be, out there surrounded by Act 1. Sort of, uh, I guess you could call it intentional spots.
Yeah.
How would that, that would actually make B1 just, business, they just, and, and, I know where it is, and I got a part of it, I was in my apartment, you know, a few weeks ago, I knew you were there, but, um, and then, from this time, too, he has been there for some time now, prior to that, this is right next to the exit getting to the interstate, he has moved his business, and I would have gone back into finding, uh, a part of this, out of the mill, right?
Yeah.
I, I just wanted to say, I don't mean to prejudge either Mr. Jesse's arguments, his rezoning, or Mr. Stevens. Both of those cases will have to go through the ZBA, and in regards to Mr. Jesse, he knows what our concerns are, you've told him what he should expect when he goes through that process. So, nothing here is assumed to be easy, each case is separate on its own.
I agree with Mr. Jay, this is in the county, if this goes through the ZBA, and we think that it fits our zoning requirements, I hope everybody here will vote, uh, override the city and think of that.
Mr. Schroder.
Nice, nice to vote. Just add to, I think, a bit of cases that were made, and as I mentioned, Act 4, about the, basically, uh, it's fun, because everybody in Champagne County has represented Champagne County, or except for anybody who doesn't live in Champagne or never, it's a county. The, the thing is, is, uh, that, that there's so constraints that, that, uh, it gives the county options, or it makes sense, rezone, uh, instead of using special uses in the Act, or it makes sense for B1 to be placed somewhere, I'm talking about, you know, the proper, divided, uh, highways, and, and maybe some utilities, things, things of that nature, that are outside the county, that are, or not outside, it's, it's, outside the municipality mile and a half, that makes sense, that makes sense for the county, and it brings in business, and, and, uh, and it adds to the county, bottom line, too. So, I, I think it just, it makes sense to do, it's not for Mr. Jesse or anybody else, but to have this for the units outside mile and a half.
Thank you, Mr. Schroder, it has to go through, obviously, the number of purposes.
Just one comment, which I think actually goes to the item that's in the agenda, which has nothing to do with whether or not Mr. Jesse rezones to B2 in the future. The item on the agenda is whether or not contractor's facility is appropriate to B1. I think the best way to consider the B1 zoning is, is essentially the rural equivalent to what municipality would call neighborhood business, it's a business that exists in a rural area for the specific purpose of providing services to the rural residents and, and agribusinesses around it, and I think this is entirely appropriate, and I'll support this. To get a little bit off what's on the agenda, I would certainly encourage Mr. Jesse to go forward, as John said, we can't predict what will happen, but I like his chances.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this item? Nope? Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Right, okay. And finally, much like your report is sitting on your desk for September, uh, any, I'd like to have that placed on file, file one, Mr. Carter, two, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nothing on consent, uh, any other business? No business, uh, nothing to be placed on consent agenda.
Like that, this highway, transportation, and, and...
That might give me a move on the count.
I have a question, I'm a comedian, I'm, hey. I'm a comedian, I'm a big, 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 tiger.
Okay, could we, the first thing on the agenda behind the transportation, is the county and township, most of the tax, private, all the, the, two, uh, two.
So moved.
Lorraine, could you call order, please, I can't hear you.
Sorry, Ms. Coward, thank you.
Let me be sergeant of arms now, on cell phones and talking.
Here's room.
Thank you, Diane.
Okay, so, move it second, and now we'll open up a discussion. Seeing now, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone to vote? Next thing is the final bridge report, and the county engineer.
In all the resolutions that we passed for county bridge money, township bridge money, and so forth, it says in there that there'll be a final report on the cost of the structures for those resolutions, obviously, there are a number of them here, 'cause we kinda do them all in, in one chunk. Any specific questions on these, I don't wanna go through them individually, but if you have any specific questions on these, I'll be sure answering.
Move your seat, that's a file.
Second.
Okay, so, for the discussion. Next one.
Jeff, please explain the county engineer hearing on, uh, that, the million dollar bridge there, $12,218.
Yeah, that, that was a, uh, high priority bridge project, which comes with federal dollars, and as you know, in most, since you were county engineer, every time you get that kind of money, there are a lot of other hoops you have to jump through, including, uh, program development reports, a lot of environmental issues, a lot of, uh, things that you have to do that are kind of outside the typical flow of the bridge. So, that was a federal aid bridge, you, it says state money, but it actually is passed through money from the feds to the state, so we received $940,000. But we do pay all the engineering fees out of the county's bridge money, um, for these types of projects, but that's why that one is significantly higher, because there was actually more effort put into it, plus it was a much larger bridge, four-sprand bridge over the salt fork up there north of Penfield. So, it was just a more difficult bridge with a lot more engineering that had to go into it, uh, before we even got out there.
Say fancy?
Yes, um, just tell us, um, how much money is left in the, what would people think? Like, uh, this is a pretty good economy.
This is the county's bridge fund.
Right, I know, but, how much do we have left for different projects?
Well, all, all this money comes out of the county bridge fund, it's about three, four million dollars in the county's bridge fund currently for bridge projects.
Thanks.
On that floor again, on, uh, page 132, under, uh, is that type over there, Hensley? $15,467, and then over on the other side, we have Stanton.
Are you looking? I'm sorry.
Up at the top of page 132, where you're discussing the engineering design and construction, you list Hensley, but on the construction side, you list Stanton.
Oh, yeah, that probably is a type, well, that should be Hensley there. That was Hensley first.
Anyone to discuss? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone to vote?
Alright, item C, is a resolution appropriating additional funds for the county motor fuel tax for Curtis Road, phase one. Those of you who have been on the county board since I got here back in '04, remember the, uh, the first phase of Curtis Road, which was from Duncan to Windstone, on the far west side of Curtis Road, um, with a section number 00, that project started in 2000. The project is obviously done, it's paid for, we were just waiting for final documentation from the state, um, which finally came, as to exactly how much, uh, the local share was gonna be on that project. If you remember back in '05, '06, when this project, um, came to be, there were some, uh, items related to poor soils, that they were gonna do some lime modification on the soils, and the soil wasn't appropriate type, once they got out there and, uh, did the testing on the soils to actually modify the soils with lime in order to build this up, uh, great for the, for the roadway. So, there was a lot of money that was put into removing the soil and replacing it with aggregate, and doing that kind of work in order to stabilize the underneath, uh, to build the roadway. And that's what a majority of these, of this money went into. Like I said, the project's been done, we've paid for it, all this is actually doing is accounting, it's moving, uh, motor fuel tax funds from our, uh, unobligated account over to our obligated account, as far as, uh, I got's audience and that kind of thing goes.
This transfer, the expect, we just didn't know exactly what the amount of data something we're not.
Right, we didn't wanna do one resolution and do another, so we're waiting for the final dollar figures. Uh, I need a motion to approve this.
I move to approve the, uh, the resolution, incorporating additional, two blocks, three by five, to 15,000, hundred motor fuel tax funds to be appropriated.
Move the second by, uh, law firm. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone to vote?
Yeah, we have a bridge petition from, uh, Colfax Township to, uh, replace a bridge, you got a map there on page, can't quite read the page online, but, got a Colfax Bridge Replacement Map, page 138, um, estimated cost of this structure is in the $250,000 range, um, very preliminary cost estimate, and, uh, we've got a petition and a resolution to, uh, to replace the structure and use the county bridge funds to replace in that structure.
Move it through, second.
The movement second is open for discussion. Seeing now, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone to vote?
We have a similar petition for a much lesser amount, $13,000, from Jared Christian and Steve Miller, written in the sort of townships for the replacement of a, of a culvert, with a four-by-three block culvert. Ask for you to approve that as well.
So moved.
Second by the...
I moved it, hold it for the second.
Okay, hold it for the second. Okay, it's open for discussion. Seeing now, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone to vote?
Another bridge petition from Tolano and Champagne Road Districts, uh, for the replacement of a bridge along the Old Church Road, this is right near... This is right near I-57, just west and a little bit southeast of Lloyd. Again, the costs are in the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar range for the replacement with a single span structure.
Move to approve.
Remove the second, I move by John and second by Laura. Open for discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye!
Anyone to vote?
We have a resolution appropriating a million dollars for the replacement of a structure located on County Highway two. You'll see the map that's in your packet. This is north of Penfield, up near the forest preserve area on County Road twenty-two. We have intentions of doing some road rehabilitation along County Highway twenty-two. This structure is, was built, I believe, in nineteen thirty-four, so it's obviously in need of replacement.
Move approved.
Okay, Al and by, move the second, it's open for discussion. Al?
I just have a quick question, Jeff. How many bridges do we have in Champagne County?
About six hundred. Yeah, you don't notice them when you drive over because most of them get speed bumped, but yeah.
And how many, I mean, we've had almost a dozen here. How many are in this repair? I know what you posted or this repair that we really have to...
We don't have any, we have one, I'm sorry. We have one that's posted that we've done a letting on, it's going to be replaced next year on the county highway system. There are a few on the township highway system, but I couldn't tell you the exact number of, I don't track all the township highway bridges.
We're okay in dollars.
Yes.
As we move forward to cover these expenses.
Yeah, and if you remember during my budget report, we had a pretty good, you know, two or three million dollars in the county bridge fund as far as the fund balance goes. There've been some questions about why we had that amount. Because we have this bridge and a couple others that are probably going to be in the million dollar range for the next years or two years that need to be replaced.
Thank you, Jeff.
Maxwell.
Jeff, this bridge north of Penfield, will it be eligible for federal money? Do you have major bridge or anything like that?
It may be eligible for federal money. Right now, the rating of it isn't low enough to have it eligible for federal money because it's got to be below fifty out of a hundred. It's not. So we could enable it maybe to make it work, but I've done enough of that to get enough money in the past and sometimes that comes back and bites you.
How do you expect this million dollars to break out?
As far as?
Construction, roadway engineering, sort of thing?
We're going to be, need very, very minimal roadway on this project. So I figure it's about eighty, twenty versus construction versus engineering.
Anyone to discuss it?
Carol? I just have one question. Sometimes it's hard to keep up with all the bridges we've already repaired. It sounds like we did this one already to me. Is there, is there a, and if I went to your link on the website, would there be a list of projects done in twenty-eleven, projects done, so that we can reference? This just sounds like we've done this road already.
No, we haven't done anything on this road in a hundred years, however. It's an old steel car road. It's the last one on our county highway system that doesn't have hot mix asshole on it. It's our worst road, if you want to rate.
I guess the question I'm really asking, I mean, it sounds familiar because I'm not familiar with six hundred roads, right? But I'm trying to figure out from year to year, how many of these we've already repaired in the last three, four years? You understand what I'm saying?
Right.
The board member can go back and look and say, you know, we didn't repair that road since the last term.
Well, that's all in our pavement management's program. The roads are. Now, the bridges, we don't keep a running calculation of every single bridge that we, because a lot of these, like in these, in these reports, are ten, fifteen, twenty thousand dollar little culvert projects. And we obviously keep tracking, but we don't have a map that says we did this one in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, and two thousand ten. We could start doing that, probably go back probably five years and pick those up. I hate to try to go back ten and twenty years and try to dig all those out of files that are in the dustboxes up on top of our shelves. But yeah, we could do that on the bridges.
I guess perhaps for the board members who'll be here, that might be useful for them, for them to be able to follow and support the work and the amount of money that it does cost to repair a bridge.
Right.
They should know and be aware of that and perhaps that could help.
Sure. You bet.
Okay, we're going to go Steve, bring that in, man. Steve's on there?
Just, please Jeff, refresh my memory, when was those bridges that were replacing built?
Before you were born?
Not the one I was thinking of.
No.
Okay.
Not knowing your system, but kind of coupling in on what Carol said, wouldn't there be expenses and couldn't you just see it as your expenses for each year?
Yeah.
Out of the bridge gap, that might be the easiest way to look at it?
Yeah.
For Diane it is.
Well, I was just wanting to comment that this part of the county is, I look down, it's not an area that's not as populated, but it is the road that goes directly to the forest preserve. So it's certainly, in the whole and the traffic that it would get to the forest preserve that's important to the country.
Some sort of name or numbering system by which you can identify the bridges in the county?
It's not easily identified by, it's not like they have the county road number. The bridges are actually just numbered as we build them in a sequential number. O-one-O means they're Champagne County bridges, but after that, it's just a sequential numbering system as we build bridges. We just add one on to the end and that's all through the national bridge inspections standards for federal highways in the state. That's not any of the structure numbers.
And wouldn't it be easier, or at least possible, to keep track of these repairs simply by the bridge number?
In what ways?
To each number, you could attach the date of construction.
Right. Yeah, and we have six hundred filed bridge inspections in them, in a file cabinet, because we have to do bridge inspections every two or four years depending on the age of the bridge. So we definitely have that data. It's just not in any kind of map format or anything like that.
Just not in a list format, it's the health of the board, you know?
Right.
Yeah, which one they say is the one that is done. Write your website, just as a number.
I might be able to get you a link actually to the state website, so we wouldn't have to go through all the various roads. So that would just take advantage of that particular state. That might be the way we could do that.
On a lot of these roads and bridges, a lot of it, you're working succinctly with the road commissioners, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so typically, wouldn't the road commissioners also keep track of which roads and bridges are being repaired in their townships?
They keep it up here. I don't think they write anything down. Also, they don't use computers.
They are a wealth of knowledge. You're right, they don't, but they are a wealth of knowledge.
They sure are.
They sure do know what's going on with their roads and bridges, so you know.
They generally know what's going on with ours.
Absolutely. Absolutely. So I think maybe, you know, it might be worth a phone call to the township road commissioners and township supervisors and you really want to get a little bit more knowledge on what's happening and which roads have been repaired and which bridges have been repaired. It's a pretty easy phone call to those townships to determine and find out a little bit more history if you're truly interested.
Yeah. Thank you.
Anyone to discuss it?
Yeah, I just, Jeff, I don't want you to spend a lot of money on trying to get all this information together because it really makes no difference. The bridge will have to be fixed when it caves in or go bad or whatever. You check them every two or four years anyway. So just so, just so you can put it on a computer for my gurus here that like computers, I don't want you to spend, I want you to spend the money on the road and the bridges.
Thanks.
Okay, Carol?
I just can't help but go in the beginning on this one. The purpose of it being electronic is not necessarily just for the members of this board, but we are actually allocating monies that we get from the public. And so the public should be, you know, also, if they were interested, I would hate to have to FOIA all the repairs and all the dates, times, contractors, money and all that to try to figure out who's getting what and how it's being got. The purpose is to be a transparent government. And so with technology, there is a responsibility for us to provide information as easy and clear as possible. I won't be here next time so you can do whatever you want. However, it is a highly recommended thing, it should be easy for the folks to find.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? Seeing that all in favor say aye.
Aye!
All right, we're going to move past H because that needs some discussion and closed session and go on to I. And this is, I talked to Deb about this, Deb U.C., about this a few weeks ago, maybe a month or so ago. She said it was, it was kind of an operational issue, but that I should bring the information to the board for your, for your benefit and knowledge. We have a diesel fuel tank that was put in in the nineteen eighties that is, you know, near our site and over by the metal buildings that we used to occupy. As time goes by, you know, we used to be able to buy three thousand gallons of diesel fuel and get a heck of a deal of it. Now you buy three thousand gallons of diesel fuel and you pay four dollars a gallon if that's what Hux is paying, because that's just the cost that they charge sometimes. There's no, there's no deals anymore inviting more fuel. And in order to keep that fuel tank, we have lots of EPA regulations, we have licenses that we have to have and it's costing us somewhere in the neighborhood of about a thousand dollars a year to maintain all the licenses and all the regulations that we have to do and inspections that we have to do to keep that fuel tank in the ground. We recently, in the last year or two, have fuel cards that our guys have in their trucks and they can basically buy fuel at any gas station in the county. Plus, the city of Urbana, as you know, has the four cent fuel tax, so now every time we buy two thousand gallons, we have to multiply that times four cents and send that money over to Urbana. So it's becoming increasingly painful to operate a diesel fuel tank. We don't see it as much of a benefit anymore as far as the county goes. We see it more of a hassle than it is a benefit. And we're looking at hiring a contractor to remove the diesel fuel tank. Basically, there's only a couple pieces of equipment that don't typically use, that don't leave the yard that use diesel fuel, you know, a loader and that type of equipment. We've got small fuel tanks that we have in the back of pickup tanks that we can use in order to fuel those when we need them. Operationally, we think it's kind of a dinosaur to have that fuel tank there. We're looking at removing it.
Chris?
Jeff, my only concern is our contingency plans for emergency. Obviously, if we get a widespread power out during a winter storm or something, we want to make sure that we've still got a contractor or someone to the fuel provider to provide, deliver fuel to the vehicles even if we have, you know, no power in our town.
Right. We do obviously have a large generator out of building that's fueled that has to give fuel to as well. So we, we don't even really have a contract with a fuel provider. We just kind of, we need fuel, which isn't all that often because this fuel tank doesn't use that much. You know, we just call around and get quotes for the best price that we can get. So we don't really have a contract per se for fuel supply. We never have in the last fifteen years.
What's the capacity of the tank?
Four thousand dollars.
So I guess the question is, do you need the fuel vehicles during a emergency or natural disaster or something? Is the plan to drive them far enough away that we can find, operate? Is it a building station? Do we have other governmental agencies maintaining fuel stores and let it dump?
We don't have, actually, we don't have a generator that would run that fuel tank. We didn't have that.
Oh, so even if we didn't have power, we could pump? Okay, well, it sounds like something to look at too big here. It's disrespectful what we do at the diesel tank. Thanks.
Okay, we need a motion and second.
This is just for information.
I think you're breaking the law. DEA got a thirteen hundred gallon limit on diesel fuel on one site.
See, we're breaking the law too, so we got to get out of there.
Well, you can get the heck find out of you if they catch. There've been a couple farmers find that out in a hard way and that's why these big fuel tanks are worthless. Let's solve that crisis.
Yeah. About five thousand dollars to have it removed.
Okay, Diane?
Okay, most of the gentlemen have asked the same questions I had. Is there something that you were talking about what Mr. Alex did? Would you replace that with smaller or you just want to eliminate it completely?
Right.
And then I have another question. When you eliminate that completely, of course, that ground would probably be contaminated. So is there things that we have to do to pull that out of there and get that clean or you just let it settle and set the way it is?
We actually have to hire a licensed contractor to remove it. It actually has a leak detecting device on it and that's one of the things that we have to pay for yearly is to have somebody come in and check the system and make sure that it's not leaking. So to our knowledge and to the contractor's knowledge, it's been doing that for us forever. It has not leaked.
So your ground should be clean. Is it in sand or dirt?
It's just in dirt.
Extra?
That's it.
Okay, any more discussion?
I'm getting tired.
Get off, go on, get down.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't dig through the paper. I'm moving to enter into executive session pursuant to five ILCs, one, ILCs one twenty slash two C eleven. Consider litigation probable or imminent against Champagne County. Further move to calling individual to the present county and near the county administrator and report to Secretary Second.
Motion?
No.
The partners?
No.
Petrie?
Yeah.
Whizzenberry?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Salas?
Yes.
Schrader?
Yes.
Wifel?
Yes.
Alex?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Binsel?
Yes.
Burkeson?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Covert?
Yes.
Esri?
Yes.
Olafio?
Yes.
James?
No.
Jay?
Yes.
Pipler? Kurtz?
Yeah.
Langton? Maxwell?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Michael? Yes, Mitchell?
Yes.